Danielle Henderson.
Here.
Michael, oh, sorry. Bill Hauck.
Here.
Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Enlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh. John Martini. John Combs.
Here.
Dave Solero. Mervyn Wright.
Here.
John Zimmerman.
Here.
Harry Fonstock. Thomas Payette. Mylan Nugaian. Cindy Turcheck. Rob Penrose. We have a quorum.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I don't have any cards or I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll move on on the agenda. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion, Mr. Zimmerman, second by Mr. Drinkwater. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from November 6, 2019. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe those minutes are in the packet. Sorry for that. I understand that the tape that goes to the minutes taker didn't make it in the mail, and so we're gonna have to bring those minutes for review at the next meeting.
Okay.
Do we need to continue that item, or does that automatically happen?
We just motion to table?
That's probably appropriate, yeah.
Okay, well, I entertain a motion to table the minutes for November 6. Oh, second. Motion by Mr. Enlow, second by Mr. Drinkwater. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Okay, item number five is discussion and possible recommendation to the Western Water, Western Regional Water Commission to appoint two voting members to the NNWPC from the following list of candidates. With respect to the public at large, member to represent environmental, biological, conservation, and public concerns, Mickey Hazelwood, Arthur O'Connor, Gene Ruffer, Matt Sunquist, and with respect to the member to represent the owners of domestic wells, Michael DiMartini, Gene Ruffer, Michael Widmer, and possible direction to staff, Jim Smitherman and Chris Wessel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did an advertising recruitment for the vacancies that you read off in the staff report, and we invited each one of the applicants to be here today as to whether or not you would like to hear from them. That's your call. But we did let them know that they had at least three minutes under public comment on this item if they wanted to speak. So with that, I would turn it back to you for deliberation.
So from the commission, how does the commission want to proceed? Do you want to give each applicant three minutes to say anything before we take action? Is that okay? Yeah? Okay, yeah, we do have one card for Mr. DiMartini. So we'll start with the at-large representatives. I don't see Mickey Hazelwood here. So we'll move on down to Arthur O'Connor. Arthur O'Connor here. I don't see Mr. O'Connor. So Gene Ruffer. I got the name right. No Gene Ruffer. Matt Sunquist? No Matt Sunquist. Okay, then we'll move on then to the domestic well owner representative, Michael DiMartini. Yes, sir. Three minutes.
I'll try to watch the clock. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to apply for this reappointment to represent the domestic well owners. On behalf of the domestic well owners, I request reappointment. I'm qualified, per my resume and the staff report. I own a domestic well for the last three decades and know about the responsibilities of an owner of a domestic well. I am also entitled to drill a new domestic well on another property. The issue here is who do the domestic well owners want to represent them on the commission? I, within the last month, I chose random areas in seven hydrographic basins and spoke with people at their home. Hundred percent of those I talked with signed the petition that I turned over to staff. That was thirty-two people. Additionally, other domestic well owners obtained another sixty-one signatures. I have turned that over to staff. So in summary, I would like to continue serving on this commission. I understand that it's an unpaid position, and I've accepted that for the last twenty-four years. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartini. Next on the list, we have Mike Widmer.
Good afternoon. Thirty-four years ago, my wife and I bought property in Verde, and as a result, we not only built the house, but we constructed a septic tank and a water well. So for thirty-three years, we understand very much the investment involved in that. Not just the septic tank and the well, but the maintenance that's involved and the issues that can occur. My wife and I are both committed to community service, which is why I would like this appointment. I'm mostly retired, and therefore I have the time and the energy for this chair. I'm very familiar with domestic well issues in all of the appropriate basins in southern Washoe County, particularly with high-density areas of septic tanks, or, I'm sorry, well, that, as well as domestic wells. Particularly the South Truckee Meadows, issues out in Cold Springs and Washoe Valley. I have experience in working with this commission through my thirty-year service at Washoe County. And I've also worked with other commissions and board, including past president of the Nevada Water Resource Association. I have a fundamental understanding of water quality and quantity issues in all of the basins that you have purview over. I also have a very good fundamental understanding of the Truckee River, its operations, its ditches, canals, tributaries. And I also have a good understanding of ASR and, well, for storage recovery and IPR programs proposed within southern Washoe County. Meaning that I feel that I'm well-qualified on this board not to consider domestic well issues, but all of the agenda items that come before this board. So in closing, if I am appointed and with direction to this commission, one of the things that I would attend to would be visiting domestic well owners on a regular basis just to engage conversations, to find out if there are any real issues, and also to give them our support, this board's support. Not to stir up any hornet's nest by any means, but rather just to show them that they do have a voice on this commission. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Widmer? Yes, John.
Mike, didn't you, excuse me, didn't you also, when you were with the county, did you participate in the domestic well mitigation program?
Yes, I did. I was pretty instrumental in that effort in talking about the Galena Fan, Mount Rose Fan areas. I've been working in that area since 1982, so I was very involved in issues with production wells, actually drilled and constructed several of the wells that may or may not have affected domestic wells in that area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Widmer.
Thank you for your time.
Hey, so at this time, will, any discussion from the commission regarding the applicants with the at-large? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Smitherman, do you have?
Yeah, actually, I do have a comment, something that I think is most appropriately treated as public comment, but a couple of the commissioners who are unable to be here today did communicate with staff as to who they would like to see in those positions, what their recommendation would be. And so these are not votes that would count, but simply comment to the commission. So Mr. Solero indicated that he would prefer Mickey Hazelwood to remain in his position and for Mr. Widmer to be the domestic well representative. And then also, Mr. Flansburgh from the city of Reno indicated the same. Mickey Hazelwood for the at-large position and Mr. Widmer for the domestic well owner. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, I have discussion here with the commission, and if there is no discussion, then I guess we'll entertain a motion on a recommendation to the Western, the Western Water, Western Regional Water Commission for an appointment to this commission.
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are you going for a motion for both positions, or would you just one at a time?
I think we'll do one at a time. We'll start with the at-large representative.
Then I will make the motion that we reappoint Mickey Hazelwood to that position.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Drinkwater to appoint. Oh, second. We got a motion to appoint Mickey Hazelwood to the commission here by Mr. Drinkwater and second by Mr. Combs. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. No opposition, so Mickey Hazelwood will go forward as a recommendation to be appointed to the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. So we'll move then to the domestic well owner representative. Any discussion? We'll conduct this the same way we just did with the at-large. So we have a motion to appoint the representative for this commission. Yes, Mr. Enlow?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Michael Widmer to the domestic well owner representative.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Enlow. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Got a second from Mr. Hauck. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, motion carries, and we'll recommend Mr. Widmer for the domestic well owner representative and Mr. Hazelwood to the Western Regional Water Commission. Anything further, Mr. Smitherman?
No, that'll do it for this item. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on then to item number six, the report and discussion concerning the results of the November 6, 2019 Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission workshop and recommendations on annual priorities for ongoing and future projects and studies for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 and possible direction to staff. Mr. Wessel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you're aware, our last meeting on November 6, we had our annual priority-setting meeting. It was a workshop. Staff presented the, staff presented the commission with a list of projects and concepts by category, which we anticipate being relevant in the upcoming 2020, 2021 fiscal year. Priority and budget-setting meetings and workshops. So we anticipate these being the items of key discussion for our priority setting with the Western Regional Water Commission. Attached to your staff report is the results of the priority-setting workshop. At the top of the first page, you'll see a ranking by category. As you know, these are the six categories that are outlined by the legislation, and these are required categories for us to consider in our planning efforts. Just for reference, there's a hundred and fifty votes cast, all told. And you can see that the ranking came out pretty much as expected. Regional reclaimed water planning came out with forty-six votes. That was essentially thirty-one percent of the overall vote total. And just for reference, I compared that with the amount of money that we budgeted last year on that topic, and it was thirty-seven percent of our budget. So that's not too far off from what we spent last year on that. The regional stormwater planning had thirty-four votes. That was twenty-three percent of the overall votes, and we spent about twenty-four percent of our budget on that category. The regional wastewater planning had twenty-three votes. That's fifteen percent of the overall vote total. We spent only two percent of our budget on that, or we budgeted two percent of our overall available funds on that. But keeping in mind that the wastewater, I think, and the reclaim, they have an interaction. I suspect it just is tilting more towards reclaim at this time. Regional flood planning received twenty-three votes. That's fifteen percent of the overall votes. Last year, we designated ten percent of our budget to that. I suspect that, I suspect there'll be some issues there that'll be, will be coming up and we'll have to deal with this year. So I would be surprised if that amount doesn't increase some. Regional conservation and planning had fifteen votes, ten percent of the total votes, and essentially had seven percent of last year's budget designated for it. And then the regional water planning had nine votes. That was six percent of the total votes. We only spent about one percent of the overall, or extended one percent of the total budget last year on that, mostly because there's the climate variability analysis, which we aren't really looking to do, but it is a category that we anticipate finding as we move forward. So right below that listing is a list of the vote totals by project. And on the backside of your attachment, it shows the projects by category and their vote totals. So just a variety of ways to take a look at it. With that, we're looking for the commission to review and discuss the results and make recommendations to the Western Regional Water Commission for concerning priorities for the 2021 fiscal year. Just, and I would point and keep in mind that this item is limited to discussion on priorities, not so much budget. Preliminary budget will be developed by staff and presented in the February 5th meeting for your deliberation at that time. So with that, Mr. Chair, that's pretty much what I have. If you have any questions, or I leave it up for you to discuss, I'd like you to settle.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wessel regarding our priorities? Ms. Hendricks?
Sorry, no, I was just.
I do have a question. So we've got a list of projects on here. There's nothing on here that would preclude us from adding, if something comes up or we realize, hey, this issue, we should be looking at it. There's nothing that precludes us. I know we've got typically set aside a contingency amount. We're not allocating all the funds, but.
Right, and we've been, in fact, last year, the Western Regional Water Commission asked us to specifically designate a section for contingency funding with that exact thought in process, in, you know, with that exact idea in their thoughts. That there will be throughout the year, some things will come up. The real key is that, just, you know, as a general idea on the budgeting, it needs to fall into one of those six categories and/or goes towards the physical development of the plan itself. That's how our legislation is, that's how our funds are restricted. So as long as the items that are brought forth later on in the year, if we do have other items and they fit within those categories, and certainly they're fair game. And keeping in mind, of course, too, this is just a budget, and it's a requirement every year. We submit a budget to the state. This has to be done. It's prescribed, having to be approved at a certain date and time, or May, so.
I just had another question on closed basin flooding. I assume that Stead Lemon Valley and Cold Springs could be considered under that category?
Yeah. Remember, some of these are actual projects, and some of them, you know, that have already been identified, and some of them are concepts, which don't, that haven't quite been clearly identified through proposal.
Okay, so at this point, then we'll take action on this priority list, which would be submitted to the Western Regional Water Commission. Is there any discussion, questions, any more questions from the commission? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the priority list and recommend that we submit it to the Western Regional Water Commission.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Drinkwater. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zimmerman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on then to item number seven. Discussion concerning a comprehensive regional water management plan, 2021 update, and possible direction to staff. Mr. Smitherman and Mr. Wessel.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna leave this one off. Similar to the process that we followed five years ago when we started, probably over five years ago, when we started review and working on an update to the plan to produce the 2016, 2035 version. This is how we started out. So Chris and I split up the chapters and the sections, and we just brought to you a really, really condensed list of what we think it's going to take to do an update of the plan. So this is kind of the first broad brush look at reviewing the plan. And then we'll dive deeper, meeting by meeting, throughout the year to bring you more concrete recommendations. So just starting really quick through the chapters, I'll just highlight the things that are on your staff report. The policies and criteria chapter, I think every time we review the plan, we probably need to have a look at those, make sure the policies and criteria are up to date and change any that need to be changed. And that's something that we can probably do early in the process. Chapter number two is on water resources. So Toma has produced a new water resource plan, so we always try to take that into high account. And so it'd be coordinating with the water resource plan that Toma puts out, and then making sure that we're including any plans of any other purveyors, and then also looking at things like the integrated source water protection program and the One Truckee River program, I think was talked about during the priority-setting workshops. We'll have to make sure that those are folded in. Chapter three, it talks more about the water purveyors and less about water resources. And so we just need to make sure, again, that we're coordinated with Toma's water resource plan, and then making sure that we've got up-to-date information on all of the other purveyors that are in the planning area. So that would be just kind of a general update. The wastewater and water quality section is, that chapter is pretty lengthy. And one of the things that I think we can probably focus on bringing up to speed are the plans for the water reclamation facility expansions. I know that some of those plans are out in quite a bit of detail now. We didn't quite have the detail the last time we went through this. So that's an item that I think can be done. Plus, there's an update of a watershed management plan going on right now, so we can include that. Source water protection program again, and then we can address proposed or at least possible nitrogen treatment at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, and then also effluent management strategies. There's been a lot of work done there. So we would need to update that chapter on those as well. Flood management, generally, we look to the flood management authority to help us out in making sure that the section on the Truckee River flooding is up to speed. And then there's a flood history section that I think we need to update and include, the Swan Lake flooding and Silver Lake. And then also, any kinds of, I guess, policies or actions that any of the local flood service providers, the cities and the county, might be expecting to take, we'd have to update as far as what they're thinking about in those as well. And that could circle back to the policies and criteria section as well. We'll have to make sure that we're on solid ground there. Let's see. The next chapter, number six, is on projections. So that one is probably gonna need almost a new set of numbers throughout the whole thing. So we would look at the most recent population projection that the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation, or Truckee Meadows Water, excuse me, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency produces. And then we always take the population projection and derive water demand projections from there and compare them to the water resources inventory that we have within the plan. So that one will have to be done again. And then in the last plan, there was a good analysis of the water demand projections and then rolling those into wastewater flow projections, making sure that those equate. And then culminating with an update of the water balance schematic map that's in the back of the plan. And then also, there are going to be some items that have to do with consistency or conformance with our plan and the regional plan that was just adopted a couple of months ago. And so we'll need to make sure that we keep those front and center to head off any possible conformance issues when we submit the updated plan to the Regional Planning Commission for conformance review. Water conservation is the next chapter, number seven, and that's just a general overview, general review and make sure that we're up to speed on Toma's current planning and then also other purveyors as appropriate. The cost and financing chapter will need a full update because planning and facility planning and et cetera are, you know, what we have in the plan now is five years old or older. So all of the plans will have to be rolled up into what the costs are going to be and then what the impact to the ratepayer and to the citizens are gonna be. And then it all rolls up at the end into an issues and action plan chapter, which will probably be completely rewritten, except for those few items that might roll over from the last plan. That'll be new stuff. And so, as I said before, what Chris and I will do is start looking more deeply at the chapters, probably starting at the beginning, chapter one, and then bringing you more detailed recommendations. We'll queue them up one or two chapters at a time as we go through the meetings throughout the next year. And then probably, at some point, bring redline edits to the existing chapters to show you what we're thinking about as far as edits and get your input and direction on those. That's all I have.
Okay. Are there any questions, or, yes, Mr. Drinkwater?
Mr. Smitherman, the finish line for this, do we have a date that this is required to be finished?
January 2021 is technically, the way the law reads, is when the review has to be complete. And so we've always, well, we haven't always met that as far as the due date for the completed plan, but last time, I think we got it adopted in April, the following April. And so that's as close as we have for a due date.
Are there any more questions from the commission? So we'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report with any direction, possible direction from the commission.
Moved to accept the report. And proceed with, I think it's gonna be a challenge this time around. We'll probably be needing to come back and contracting out certain pieces of the plan to get it done. But I think you guys probably need a little bit more time to put some more meat on the bones here before you have some recommendations on that.
Okay.
Yep, I agree.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. Enlow and second from Mr. Zimmerman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Item number eight is review and possible recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission to approve the Second Amendment to the agreement with data instincts to assist and provide guidance in the development of outreach strategies, messages, materials, and information dissemination methods related to regional effluent management planning at no additional cost to extend the term of the agreement through December 2020 and possible direction to staff. Mr. Smitherman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So the guidance that we've been receiving on this one pertains specifically to the advanced purified water aspect of effluent management. So I just wanna make sure that we're clear. If you remember, we started data instincts off with a twenty-five thousand dollar contract that you could authorize me to sign because we needed to get him going on the project pretty quickly, and then that was followed by a recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission for a hundred thousand dollars worth of work, and, and, and the contractor has been proceeding and, and making good progress and working well with local staff, most especially the communications staff at TMA. And so the third paragraph in my, in my staff report actually calls that out, and TMA has been so instrumental in doing a lot of the hands-on work that they've been able to stretch the budget quite a ways. So there is something around sixty thousand dollars remaining in the, in the purchase order for this one, so in order to have data instincts continue their work, all we need is a time amendment for the, for the contract now. So, so that's what my recommendation is, is to amend the contract for a second time, extending the term through, through next year, through the year twenty twenty, so have it run at the end of December in twenty twenty, and then also to include a new fee schedule. So data instincts issues a new fee schedule every year. Their increases are on the order of two and a half to three percent. Couple of them went up, a couple of them went down, so actually, it's, it's probably about a wash as far as their fee schedule goes, but, but we would amend the contract to, to their new fee schedule and for a new term. So that would be my recommendation for you to recommend to the Western Regional Water Commission.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission? Comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to make a recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission to approve and execute the second amendment to the agreement with data instincts through December twenty twenty.
So moved.
Got a motion, motion from Mr. Zimmerman, a second by, from Mr. Hauck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is commission comments. Are there any comments from the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then to staff comments.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. One thing that I'll note is that I neglected to put back on the agenda the program manager's report and the items for the next meeting. I think we pulled those off for the workshop because it was gonna be kind of an informal setting, so since we don't have an action item for next meeting, I'm just gonna tell you what I'm gonna do, if that's okay. Your next regularly scheduled meeting, the first Wednesday in January, would fall on January first, and so I'm gonna cancel that meeting, and we're gonna move on to February fifth would be your next scheduled meeting. We're gonna take a deeper dive and look at the plan review items, as I indicated a couple of items ago. Then we will have a draft tentative budget for you to look at that would be built on the priorities that you reviewed and accepted the report today. Also, I am expecting to bring you a proposal on teaming up with the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency on, teaming up on the, the PIP. What does that stand for again? Public Infrastructure Investment Plan, that's right, yeah. I've had some discussions with Jeremy Smith, the acting director over there, and, and he's interested in working with the commission, with the Water Planning Commission on developing that. So it's something that is kind of on a five-year timeframe for them, they wanna get that done before their next plan update, and I think that it would be a good idea for this commission to, to play, to be at the table during the development of that plan. And so we'll bring you something more on that next meeting in February. And then also, it's possible that I'll have conformance for you, recommendation for you on some infrastructure that's in, in question, so. And that's all I have, unless there are other items that we'd like added. You can't really take action on it right now during comment period, but if you would just like to email staff, contact us one way or another with any recommendations for, for agenda items, we can take those from you. So thanks very much.
Any questions for Mr. Smitherman? So should we take action then to accept the cancellation of the January one and?
I, I don't think you can, because it's not, there's no action item for it. So that's why I told you, I'm just telling you what I'm gonna do, but you don't wanna meet on, on New Year's Day, so I'm, I'm assuming I'm safe canceling that one.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move on then to item number eleven, which is public comments. Don't have any cards and don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll move on then, and any other discussion items, issues, anything you wanna bring up? Okay, then I will declare the meeting adjourned.